Can we go back?
That's fine. I can only imagine the reason I would share my screen is if you need to show one of the items that's on the packet. I don't know.
Yep, absolutely. So she'll make you presenter in case we need to do that. I'll let you do that. I'll go ahead and lead on Spark.
Okay.
Also, for city council dates, if these items move forward, Spring Ridge replat 2, the consent agenda item would be February 16th for public hearing. Everything else would be March 2nd for public hearing is the quickest I can do it unfortunately. Todd at Arnie. Good evening. We are live and ready to start the planning commission for January 28th. Mr. Chair, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, and I know that Mr. Arnie is working on logging into Spark. So we're going to start now and then he can join in progress. He was on the phone call, so.
Okay, and we will also do, we'll do a roll call vote tonight, so we won't have to vote through Spark.
Excellent. All right. It is now seven o'clock, January 28th, 2021, and I call this meeting of the Value Planning Commission to order. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order 20-36, said meeting may be held via tele, video conference, telephone conference, or by conferencing like any other electronic meetings. As such, said meeting will be by virtual meeting and the public may join by calling our Community Relations Department and being provided a link to attend the meeting via go-to meeting. Said meeting can be viewed via Facebook Live by visiting the City of Bellevue's Facebook page, but no public participation will be allowed or considered via Facebook Live. Going forward, I would ask for a roll call.
Mr. Casey?
President.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
President.
Can you turn on your mic? I can't hear you.
It's on.
Mr. Arnie?
President.
Mr. Ritz?
President.
Mr. Ackley?
Here.
Mr. Hankins?
President.
Ms. Cutsforth?
President.
Mr. Jacobson?
President.
This meeting will be conducted via the Open Meetings Act, a copy which will be located on the city's website. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 17th, 2020 regular reading.
The minutes is submitted, hearing no modifications or changes.
I heard a motion by Mr. Hankins.
Ackley second.
And second by Ackley.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Arnie?
Yeah.
Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ackley?
Yes.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Okay.
Now I would like to accept on the record all staff reports, attachments, memos, handouts regarding each application. Staff, any updates?
Yes, we do have a couple of updates. Also, before I get into that, we're having a lot of background interference on the meeting app. So if you are not speaking, if I could please have you mute your mic, that would be very helpful. I appreciate that. A couple of updates, we did receive two emails in the last couple of days. These were passed along to our planning commissioners and become part of the record. We received an email on Agenda Item 2A, and that was from Mr. Vanderhoof. He was just requesting that there be larger lots across the street from his property in the Spring Ridge replat. Also received an email on Agenda Item 3C, and that was from Mike Cassabom, and he was stating his opposition to the requested change of zone.
Would anyone like to make a motion to accept on the record with the?
I'll make a motion to approve in the record all staff reports, attachments, memos, handouts, as well as the updates that were just presented.
I'll second. All right. Motion by Jacobson, second by Cutsforth.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Arnie?
Yeah.
Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ackley?
Yes.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
We have one item on the consent agenda tonight. I will read it into record and then ask to see if there's a motion to move forward with it. All right. Item 2A, request to preliminary plat lots 1 through 45, Spring Ridge replat 2, being a replat of lots 104 through 153, Spring Ridge, and final plat lots 1 through 45, Spring Ridge replat 2. Applicant Orchard Valley, Inc., location 21st Street and Rose Lane Circle. Case numbers S-2012-27 and S-2012-28. As it's a consented item, unless somebody wants to move it out of consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Tammy?
Yes.
This is Melvin with Orchard Valley.
Yes.
We would like to table our request for this evening.
Okay.
Tammy, do we need a motion to?
Mr. Sudbeck, Mr. Sudbeck, how long would you like it tabled for?
Uh, for two weeks. What, let's say a month.
Okay. The next planning commission meeting is February 25th, so that'd be the next time that we'd be able to get you on the agenda.
Understood, that would be fine.
Okay. So based on the applicant's request, is there a motion to continue this item to the February 25th Planning Commission meeting?
On move.
Motion by Cutsforth?
Second by Casey.
Second by Casey.
Mr. Casey? Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Arnie?
Yeah.
Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ackley?
Yes.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the public hearings tonight, I will read each one into record. I will then open it up for public comment for or against on the record. After that time, we will close the public hearing for that item and turn it over to the commissioners. First item on the agenda, Item 3A, request to rezone lots 1 and 2, Figgyland Overlook, being a replatic tax lot 11, located in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 10, T13N, R13E of the 6th Primoridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to RS-120 for the purpose of residential development. Preliminary plat lots 1 and 2, Figgyland Overlook, and final plat lots 1 and 2, Figgyland Overlook. Applicant, HBC Homes, location 2116 Fairview Road, case numbers Z-2012-18, S-2012-29, and S-2012-30. Before we begin, does the city like to give us a update on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This request is a request to preliminary plat, final plat, and rezone a tax lot, an existing tax lot that's approximately 1.8 acres. It's currently zoned ag. As such, it's a non-conforming lot because it doesn't meet the minimum requirements of our ag zoning. This rezoning request would bring the property into conformance. Basically, it would be split into two lots, and we have a preliminary plat, final plat situation because the applicant is also dedicating additional right-of-way for Fairview Road. Staff is recommending approval of this request based on conformance with the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Now we'll put this up to public comments and see if there's anybody that would like to speak on the record for or against this item. Not seeing anybody on the call. Staff, is there anybody on any of the other sources?
We're not taking comments from Facebook Live, so it's just anybody that's on the go-to meeting.
Understood. Give another 10 seconds or so for anyone on the call. Hearing no one, I'm going to close the planning for the public hearing for this item and turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, thoughts?
Question for staff, Tammy?
Yes.
In terms of the current layout, it looks like there's a driveway that would cross both parcels. Do we need a easement at all, or are they planning to have separate access on each lot?
There will be separate access on each lot. Currently, there are two, two access points off of Fairview, two existing access points. Those will be maintained.
Okay, thank you. I guess if there's no other comments or questions, I'd be prepared to make a motion. I would make a motion that we approve this application based upon conformance with the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, comprehensive plan, and a lack of perceived negative impact in the surrounding areas.
Second by Jacobson.
Motion by Ackley, second by Jacobson.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Arnie?
Yeah.
Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ackley?
Yes.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go in front of the city council, March 2nd. Continuing on to Item 3B, request to amend Section 5.28, City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding the permitted uses in the MH Heavy Vehicle Factory zoning district to allow for concrete recycling. Applicant Douglas Ernest, Central Recycling LLC. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This text amendment is being brought about by Mr. Scott Ernest. He is requesting that we add recycling plants as permitted uses in our MH zoning district. In looking at our current regulations, we have regulations that deal with batch plants. However, we did not have any language that dealt with the flip side of that, which would be the recycling of that concrete, asphalt, or paving material. Staff researched what some of the neighboring jurisdictions have. What we are proposing is language that would be consistent with some of our neighboring jurisdictions as well as what we have in the ordinance currently for batch plants. We are proposing that temporary recycling plants be a permitted use, temporary meaning not to exceed 36 months of operation. Permanent recycling plants be a conditional use. This falls in line with the batch plants that we have. We have temporary batch plants as a permitted use. We have permanent batch plants as a conditional use. The other thing that we are proposing is currently the zoning ordinance for MH allows temporary batch plants not to exceed 24 months of operation. We would also recommend that be changed to 36 months of operation. The thinking there is just because if you have large construction projects, especially with industrial operations, those could exceed 24 months. It wouldn't be unheard of for a project to be a two- to three-year project. So we would make that recommendation as well. One thing I want to point out, thank you for, to Mr. Jacobson for pointing this out, we do have a typo in our proposed language. Under permitted uses for Section 5.28.02, Number 37, it should say temporary recycling plant for concrete, asphalt, or paving material instead of and paving material. Again, just keeping consistent with the language that is already in there. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Is the applicant present and would speak on anything before opening up the public?
My name's Scott Collins, and Doug is Doug Ernest. He's at the camera here. We don't need to speak on anything. I think it's pretty self-explanatory unless somebody needs to, or we need to answer a question.
Thank you. All right. Is anybody now opening up for public hearing? Is anybody wish to speak on the record for or against this item? Not seeing anybody else on the call that would like to, so I'm going to close the public hearing, turn it over to commissioners. Commissioner, what do you wish? Mr. Arnie?
Just a question for the applicant. So just explain to us temporary batch plant as something permanent. Is it, it moves around as a need of the community change? Or is there not a good place that you would do a permanent as opposed to temporary? Just want to understand your business a little bit.
So we're not a batch plant. What we're doing is we're recycling concrete that will be removed from city state county roads, sidewalks. It is something that can be moved around. If you are familiar with the area, you have Imus and Conrico, which are much larger than what we will be doing. I don't know if that answers your question. You can move it around to different locations.
I would just ask, is it, is this a long-term solution for you guys? Is it truly just a three-year thing and then you look for a different location because you've taken care of all the need of this area?
No, it'll be a consistent need.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Staff, I've got a question for you. And I'm not saying this against the applicant in this regard, but just confirming, is there a language that dictates what is considered temporary versus permanent?
Yes.
Is it at the ground?
No, it's the timeframe more so than anything else. So as Mr. Ernest just indicated, you know, his company is not necessarily going to stay in one place longer than 36 months. They'll go where the need is, or they'll go where the project is. Staff is kind of the one delineating the, between the temporary and the permanent. Again, just based on some of our conversations with neighboring jurisdictions and going off of the language we currently have for batch plants, again, different use. But we are the ones that are suggesting temporary be 36-month versus permanent be more of a conditional use permit, so there's more oversight. And that would be in excess of that 36-month timeframe.
I have a follow-on question for staff, if I may. On the definition of temporary, if this batch plant is on temporary property and it's relocated at month 35 to a different location on the same property, does that restart the clock?
It would not in my mind because it's still on the property. So it would be on, have to be on the same property for less than 36 months. It would have to move, then move to a different property.
Thank you.
Question for the applicant. I know I'm familiar on the interstate near where I-80 cuts down to 75. There's a number of recycling areas there. And again, what would you estimate that the height will be on your recycle piles and your debris piles as it's coming in? And how often you would turn those?
If I'm going to stay now, maybe 15 to 20 feet. Did you get that?
I did. Would you have any issue if we made a restriction in terms of height? Again, I guess Tammy and commissioners, what I'm thinking about, like subsection 17 of the permitted uses, junk carried out, parts salvaged, that kind of thing. We have fencing or blocking requirements. Again, we're certainly not going to be able to block all of this kind of an operation. But I think in terms of height restrictions, we might want to consider what we've got out there. And some of these get to be 60 feet tall, I think, when you drive by some of them. And again, if Mr. Collins, if 15 or 20 feet would be allowed, is maybe we consider maybe restriction on that. Tammy, I don't know your thoughts there.
Sure. I don't, I don't see a problem with that. You know, as long as it's something that's enforceable, we could definitely put that into the ordinance, the proposed language moving forward to City Hall or to City Council.
Do you have a suggestion on that language, Mr. Ackley?
I'll think of it before motions, may I? I guess one other question, if the applicant ultimately leaves the site and there's debris or piles left on the site, who do we ultimately hold responsible? Landowner if they have a lease deal as opposed to them if it's an owned deal?
In my opinion, in a situation like that, it would become the landowner because they're the ones that have the pile of debris that is, is regulated and is not allowed. So that would be my take, is that the landowner would be responsible once the, the temporary recycling plant is gone.
Okay, thank you. I guess much of your?
Question for staff. Go ahead, Mr. Ritz.
My suggestion for the visual to be kind of, to be consistent would be to replicate the language that's in subsection 17. But I would suggest that maybe we only add that for permanent uses and not the temporary as I think that that would be a kind of a burden. If you're aiming for this to be a use that they can do on construction sites that is going to be temporary, nature, you know, one to two-year project. I want, I debate if adding any kind of landscaping to this would just kind of be an unnecessary cost long-term. I don't know if Mr. Ackley would agree with that.
No, I guess I was more focused on the height as opposed to, I don't think fencing is ultimately going to block it and depending on the topography where they would go in. I think that's a good idea, Mr. Ritz.
Does the applicant have any issues with adding a similar item with fencing to permanent uses of this?
Mr. Ritz, so one thing I would point out too is if a permanent one is a conditional use permit, that is something that could all be regulated through that conditional use permit application. Because it wouldn't, the permanent would not be allowed. Because it wouldn't, the permanent would not be allowed as a permitted use. So, we would have oversight through the CUP process for any kind of landscaping or screening as necessary.
Okay, well then that's, I would rather leave that up to the individual case-by-case basis personally, to, instead of making a blanket statement in this regard.
I guess the question I would have is if we were to put a height limitation for the piles of recycled material, what that would be. Personally, I don't have enough experience in this arena to know what would be typical for a pile of recycled concrete or paving material.
So, I would like to add that the batch plant that's at the intersection of, I believe it's, whatever, right there off of Highway seventy-five. If you look at that from the road, those piles are probably fifty, maybe forty, forty, fifty feet high. Ours are, we're looking at twenty to twenty-five. And you do not have any restriction for fences on that. I just wanted to add that to the discussion.
Same question, so, so if they were, yeah, if they came in with a request for a permanent recycling plant and did a conditional use, what would be, I guess, the thing that you would, as staff, would recommend or would require them to put in a conditional use permit? Because my, here's my thought, if we're gonna start putting all these restrictions on there, the applicant may consider doing a conditional use permit, making a permanent, not just a temporary thirty-six month deal. But what would be the thing you would anticipate we would ask for if it was a conditional use permit?
I think quite honestly, to Mr. Ackley's point, no amount of fencing or landscaping is going to screen those piles. So, it might be one of those situations where we look at it a case-by-case basis. Quite frankly, I'm not sure what you could accomplish with fencing or landscaping with this type of use, just because of the nature of the business. It would be, it would be hard to do because a fence is not going to screen a twenty-foot pile. I think we would be more concerned, we would probably be more concerned about location in regards to surrounding land use than maybe per se fencing or screening.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out why would the applicant want to just go for a permanent as opposed to temporary? If we're not, you know, if a conditional use permit would make them screen it and landscape it and fence it, what's the benefit of going temporary as opposed to permanent? And if it's just true to the location, then I guess, I guess that's my question. And why would they not just do a permanent? And then we can control it all? And then some of Mr. Ackley's concerns go away because we're controlling it as a permanent. We're staying up front where we're agreeing to.
I would offer the guess that such a temporary plant could be used for large demolition projects. You would set it up right next to the demolition site, crush the concrete as you're demolishing it, push it there. Then, you know, once that location's done with, move on to a different one, would be why you would do temporary. But maybe Mr. Collins could speak on why temporary might be chosen in lieu of permanent?
Basically, what you just said, because you're moving it around. You're not staying in one spot. Maybe it will evolve into something like Conrico or Hyman's, where you are in one central location. But right now, we want, we want the ability to be able to move from one location to another.
So, Doug Ernest here, can you guys hear me? Okay, so, a lot of it has to do with, you know, the topo, the topographical. You know, does the, does the property itself sit down from the roadway? You know, ten feet, fifteen foot, or what have you? So then if you build up a pile, I mean, what, what is it that you're looking for? As far as, as far as that goes, because you can, we have, there's enough land here to spread piles out, if you understand what I'm saying. It doesn't need to be built up. We're not dealing with just two acres, five acres, and just trying to fit as much product on there as possible. You're dealing with forty acres of land, so you've got a lot of area to, to spread out. And so you don't need to build piles up on that side of it. So, in every situation, it's a little bit different. The reason, I guess, we were looking at the query is because our lease on this land is gonna be temporary until we can, you know, potentially buy the land or turn it into a permanent situation, you know. We are also looking at other locations to do this processing because it's all about location and trucking and hauling. I hope that maybe that answers some, some questions too.
It did, I guess, but also raised another question in my mind. Cammy, when I think about the east side of Highway seventy-five, west of the base heading Virgil Anderson, maybe you're familiar with it? Just a number of construction debris that's saved up for years and years and years, so there's low pounds. Again, if we, if we provide temporary recycling plant, I mean, is there any requirement that there should be a turn on these in terms of how much they can dump before they're grinding and hauling it back off again? Gentlemen, I just mentioned they potentially have a forty-acre site. I guess I'd hate to think that we're gonna end up with twenty acres of debris before we start doing any kind of grinding and hauling it back off again. Or worse yet, forty acres of debris and then they, they pick up and leave. And again, I'm not suggesting that would happen, but from a planning perspective, we obviously have to consider that. I guess operationally, Mr. Collins, or the gentleman next to you, what's the plan on how much? You, you bring it on site, you grind it up, and you get it back off on site again. I imagine you're, the goal is to turn it so you got money coming back on the recycled items you're selling.
So, so if I could speak on that, what they were doing was just basically, I mean, demolition contractors looking for a place to store material for a while and then process it when they wanted to. Central recycling, we're a business, we want to make money. The only way we make money is processing the material and selling it. That's would kind of be counterproductive to what we're looking at. If, if we're just at a bunch of concrete stored on site. We're also doing recycling dirt and other, selling the other type of products, landscape-type products also. So, it's, it's not just gonna be a one, one thing type of service. So, we're trying to spread out a little bit and offer landscapers, other type homeowners to come in and get product too.
Let me make sure I understand the landscaping piece. Would you take trees and limbs and things, would you shred those to create mulch or this is purely for concrete, asphalt, or paving material?
Concrete and asphalt, paving material? When I, when I say landscape materials, like old, olders, and sell them alongside with our, with our rock products?
Okay, that's, we're getting a little deviated from the point, really, I think the point or the focus tonight is we're trying to amend the rules for not just for yourselves, sir, but for everyone that wants to set up a temporary batch plant, or temporary recycling plant on a property zone. And to that regard, as these are temporary and thirty-six months max nature, I see what Mr. Ackley is saying of, you know, they, they do the demo, they crush it all up, but there's no market, or the market falls out, something happens where it's just kind of sitting there. I'm not too worried about that because the longer it sits there, the longer it's cutting anyone's pocket, no matter what the market is. My question to staff is the, the facility that's at the intersection of Highway seventy-five and three-seventy, the concrete plant there, do you, is there a restriction on the heights that they can have on their piles?
No, there is not. Currently, they're a batch plant. We don't have any restriction, any restrictions on heights for piles.
Okay. The only other question I would have would be if, I don't even know if OSHA would touch on how high a pile could be before it would have to have special considerations. But I don't really want to kind of figure out what that is at this moment. I believe that they said twenty-five foot was what I heard would be the tallest pile. On a temporary site, I can't imagine it getting higher because then it becomes cumbersome to deal with. They'd spread it out more first. So, I would suggest maybe we add the, for the temporary use as a recycling plant, a ten, twenty-five foot maximum pile height. If the applicant agrees that that is sufficient. I don't want to hamstring them on what they're doing. I also don't want to have too high a piles that could become a safety hazard on a temporary site.
Twenty-five feet is good with us.
Mr. Ackley, are you okay with putting the twenty-five foot height on the temporary?
Again, I'm, I guess I'm just generating discussion here on things we should be thinking about from a, from an ordinance standpoint. Again, I hadn't thought about the batch plant that's sitting there on seventy-five and three-seventy, which apparently we have no limits on. That particular site, I guess, is much more heavily treed and does have, and again, I have no idea what this site is. And dear point, Mr. Ritz, we're doing engineering ordinance here. We're not doing anything without a specific parcel of land. I guess, Cammy, I'd be curious from the discussion if you have any concerns on either pile heights or, again, the amount of area that you would have a recycling plant in. Again, forty acres to me sounds like potentially a hell of an ice ore if they're not getting it ground up right away, if they've got an obligation to take debris from a site. But to Mr. Ritz's point, the market falls out and they don't have a, a use for it immediately, maybe with the ground product. You know, do we let piles stack up on many, many acres until the market comes back? Again, just throwing out discussion points, and I, I may well be all with here, and this is fine as is.
To your point, Mr. Ackley, I don't have an issue with having a restriction on pile height. I guess as far as limiting the amount of land, I think that is probably a bit far-reaching. I would look more at if it's properly zoned, it would be fine with me. Again, I want something that's easily enforceable, and I want something that's rock-solid in court. So, that's my main thing when we look at language. But I wouldn't have any issue if Planning Commission wanted to move it forward with a restriction on the piles or the height that the piles could be. And I think to Mr. Ritz's point, again, the nature of this business, they don't make money if it sits there. They want to turn it around, they want to get it out of there. If it's sitting in piles on a piece of property, it's not doing them any good.
Mr. Chair, a comment if I might?
Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you. I'm not necessarily against the twenty-five foot height, but, but it seems like we're maybe reacting a little bit arbitrarily to this particular contractor, but we're looking at a zoning ordinance ordinance that would apply to anybody else that comes along. I see two pieces of being arbitrary here that I'm a little bothered by is, if the next recycling person came back and said, "Well, you know, we've got different equipment, and we use a thirty-foot pile. And that's just our equipment we purchased. It's, it's newer or older than what Mr. Collins has, and it uses a thirty-foot pile. It makes perfect sense to do it." You know, by putting the height restriction on, which is completely acceptable to the applicant, might be acceptable to future applicants. I think we want to make sure we apply it to a broader scope to every applicant that might come along because this is for all temporary batch plants. And along that line, I guess, my second thought I would throw out is that, well, the twenty-five foot height and this temporary restriction applied to recycling, if somebody came in with a batch concrete plant and was putting sand and concrete in piles that were over twenty feet high, with five-foot high, would it be okay if it was temporary? And so, the twenty-five foot height may apply to all heavy construction activities as opposed to temporary or permanent. You know, whether it's going in or going out, it's still twenty-five foot that might be offensive, is what I think I'm hearing. So, I'm kind of throwing that out for some feedback and, and conversation here with the rest of the commissioners as to the appropriateness of even putting a height restriction in here. I understand the offensiveness we're trying to get around to Mr. Ackley's point, but, but it seems like it, it's a little customized just for this applicant as opposed to whatever else we may see. The other thing I'm slightly bothered with is that we might be able to limit the pile heights to twenty-five feet, but just bear in mind, there's gonna be equipment taller than twenty-five feet on that site because it's gotta be above the piled offload. And I'm guessing there's some sort of belt application that's gonna run up and grab the recycled material off. So, there might be five or ten feet of equipment higher than the twenty-five foot. It's always gonna be there regardless of the height of the pile. So, just, just something to think about. Again, I would not vote against a twenty-five foot height. I see construction projects where they're actually building something versus taking something out that might store pile, uh, material, stockpile material higher than that.
I guess my biggest concern with the pile height is mostly safety. You know, once they create the pile of twenty-five foot and they want to, you know, get a, put it onto a truck or something, if you've got a thirty, forty-foot pile, then you start getting some safety issues where you take a little bit off the bottom. Now you've got the whole sliding down is what I'm worried about. I'm sure that they have ways of mitigating that, but that's my big concern with too high of a pile in these situations. For permanent plants, I would imagine they would have larger pieces of equipment there that would routinely get the larger piles. I'm kind of focusing on this temporary, just to give you what my mindset is.
Maybe if we could, the applicant could address that. But they, they come under OSHA and environmental standards for being off and on the site. And I'm sure the ratio height to width is probably covered in their work methods, and maybe the applicant could address that.
Typically, just industry standards of, of what you're doing. I mean, we're not, if, if you look at most of those, or most of the places that are around, I mean, you're, you're potentially driving a front-end loader up on a pile, dispersing it, just like with a, with a belt, like Mr. Jacobson said. Like I said, we're, it's real hard to pin down, Ackley, how it's, everything's gonna go because it's, construction's a-changing, you know, venue. You know, you were worried about the market dropping out of things. If the market dropped out, then obviously, we're not getting product coming in too. Just keep that in mind on that side of it. I mean, we, we're really at the mercy of, of what's happening on the construction side of things. So, if, if the market does fall out and we're not, and then construction projects are, well, minimum, then we're not gonna be processing a whole lot of the concrete.
If I might, to Mr. Jacobson's point, I think he makes a good point. The one thing is, we're looking at this for the MH district. We're not looking at this in a more restrictive district. The intent of the MH district states, "The zone provides for the widest range of industrial operations permitted in the city." It includes permitted uses such as highway maintenance yards or buildings. Again, no height limi, height limitation on any pile of stock that they have. Allows for junkyards, auto parts salvage, auto wrecking yards. Also allows for a number of manufacturing. Also allows for rendering plants, things of that nature. So, I guess, again, speaking to Mr. Jacobson's point, I would probably have more concern if we were looking at this in a more restrictive zoning, such as Flex or ML, but this is our MH zoning district. So, we don't currently have those restrictions in place for other similar uses in the MH zoning district.
No, I agree. Leland, you make some good points. If we're gonna mess with the language in thirty-seven, I don't know how we don't also start messing with the language in subsection thirty-eight. And I'm not sure, number thirty-six, what a stone and monument works would be in terms of the same kind of issues. I think if that's something that becomes a concern, we can revisit it. Good discussion, thank you.
Mr. Arnie, you've had your hand up for a while.
Yeah, no, I just, I think if we're gonna talk about the, the pile heights, it's more in my, what Mr. Ackley's saying as far as, you know, the impact on the neighborhood. I don't think we can pick arbitrarily twenty-five foot from a safety standpoint because we don't know height-to-width ratios. That's all gonna be covered by OSHA and industry standards. But I don't, I don't want to pick twenty-five, and we were all wrong tonight. It should've been fifteen, or we picked twenty-five, it should've been fifty. So, to me, the height's really, only conversation with height is related to the impact of the surrounding neighborhood, not necessarily to the safety of, of the operations there.
I can get behind that, and I do see that there is a, the, further down on the space limitations, there is the note on fifty, or five point two-eight point zero-six-three. the, further down on the space limitations, there is the note on fifty, or five-point-two-eight-point-zero-six-three about the maximum building height. You know, which takes into account gross floor area ratio, which would also reference the OSHA standards. With, based on that, all that, I'm kind of in line with what Mr. Arnie is saying and, uh, maybe we just, we can't fix the entire, we can't pick a, uh, good height with just a discussion tonight with us. And I'd rather leave that off than just try to pick one line item and then maybe we'll, what about this line item? What about this line item? And opening up that team. My only note is to maybe have staff review to see if there does need to be a height restriction going forward for permanent, uh, facilities. But, um, for tonight, I don't, I, I'm kind of withdrawing my suggestion of the twenty-five foot for just this one line item. All that said, does anyone else have anything to say? Does anyone want to move forward with this? Thoughts?
I'll make a motion if there's no more discussion.
Mr. Arnie?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve amendment to section five dot two-eight of the City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding permitted uses in the MH heavy manufacturing zone district to allow for concrete recycling and including the text amendment that Mr. Jacobson, uh, mentioned earlier.
I'll second that.
Motion by Arnie, second by Kane.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Arnie?
Yeah.
Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ackley?
Yes.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go in front of the City Council on March second. Item three C.
I, I do have a question. If, if I may ask, you said it goes in front of the City Council on March second. I was told that it gets read on February third and then again on, or February second and then again on February sixteenth, it goes up our discussion. And we can ask for a waiver for the third meeting and have a vote. Is that incorrect or?
Mr. Collins, unfortunately how the calendar falls, um, our agenda for City Council next week is already set. So I couldn't put this item on for first reading before it moved out of Planning Commission. So we'll put it on for first reading on February sixteenth. Let me make sure I have that date correctly. It'll be the second meeting in February. Yes, February sixteenth. We'll do second reading March second. You would be able to ask for a waiver of the third reading at the March second meeting.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification and I appreciate everybody's time and allowing us to, uh, talk about our stuff.
Thank you for bearing with us as we talk through all of that. All right. Item three C, request to rezone tax lots six A, one A, and nine A, four A, one, east of Right of Way, located in the southwest quarter of section two-six, T-one-four N, R-one-three E, from BG to RG-twenty for the purpose of a residential group home facility. Applicant I-three LLC, general location six-zero-one, Chateau Drive, case number V-dash-two-zero-one-two-dash-one-seven. Staff, could you give us an update on this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, earlier today, I did receive an email from Mr. Fisher Easterling on behalf of I-three LLC requesting that this item be continued to the February twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting agenda. And as previously noted, um, we did receive an email, um, yesterday in opposition of this request that was forwarded to you, um, prior to the meeting.
All right. It is still a public hearing, so if there is anybody that is present that wishes to speak for or against this item.
Uh, yeah, I was, uh, concerned a little bit about, uh, having a business, business.
Before we get too far, can you state your name and address for the record real quick?
Uh, Jerry Castabon. Have, uh, part owner of the property at six-one-one, two-one-one Harville. Right across the street from that property. It's presently a, a martial arts school. But my concern is all the other property bordering, uh, the roads is, uh, business. And so having a residential property right in the line there, I, I guess, that kind of looks kind of odd to me to have all business property except for right in the center along Harville, uh, changing that to that. Our concerns was, uh, having a group home. My son, he's the master. He teaches the school. He's had that school there for fifteen years. And he teaches a lot of young kids and their families. And sometimes the respect of, uh, sometimes the families won't look like a good cause for that to bring their child to, over there when they drop them off and leave them. So that was one of the concerns. I, I think you got a letter from Master Castabon. It was sent over yesterday to you. I don't know if you've had time to read that or not. That kind of pretty well explains that. But I, uh, when me and him bought the property here fifteen years ago, we was looking at, as, as the business properties, it's all business properties around. So right across the street, I don't see having a residential property. And the rest of it all burst into business property that's bordering the streets there. Uh, I don't know, uh, what that'll do to my property valuation too as far as having, uh, residential compared to business property. People with business property has businesses. There, uh, the City of Bellevue, they're sure get tax money too, but if you have a business, you get other revenues coming in besides just off the property. So I think it's a good business thing for a Bellevue community to keep it as business property so you can draw adjust additional revenues. I guess that's about all I got to say on the item, but, uh,
Yep, um, so to quickly, it is still open, uh, public hearing. We did receive the letter from, uh, Master Castabon and it was, uh, included in the record, uh, for this item. So.
Okay. But that's about all I have to say. Uh, I just don't want to evaluate my property to go down and, uh, so that's, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm not seeing anybody else on the call for the public. So I'm going to close the public hearing, turn it over to commissioners. Commissioners, uh, the applicant has requested a continuation to the twenty-fifth. Does anyone want to make a motion or discuss this now?
Hey, buddy, question. Oh, question for staff. Oh, go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Arnie, then it's Mr. Hankins.
Can I just, can I ask a question or a comment to the, the, the public person? I caught it, did catch your name. It says Randy on the screen. Um, he talked about his property, yeah, Jerry, he talked about his property valuation. I guess, uh, Jerry, would, would you say a, a empty bowling alley building that's sitting empty and vacant is more or less going to help your property value as opposed to a full group home business that is taken care of and maintained and, and operating in operation?
Well, looking for a business property, I think that building will be sold, uh, to somebody to run a business. I don't think it's going to sit there permanently. You know, just going down the wayside because there's a big demand out there for commercial property. I, I've looked around for, at commercial property. I live in Lincoln myself. But, um, there's a shortage of commercial property that's in, um, the working man's price range. There's a lot of commercial property out there that's extremely enormous high, which can't give a, an individual a chance. And so I do think the bowling alley will be sold for, for, for some other business takeover. I know the bowling has really down, downhill since the virus. Uh, the bowling alleys, uh, are struggling and quite a few of them is closed because of that. I don't think it's a permanent deal. I think you can, uh, somebody eventually will take them by it. The bowling alley in Beatrice, it's set empty for about a year, year and a half, two years. And they finally sold it and the new generation there is doing real well with it. So I think the property isn't just going to sit there empty or vacant for long periods of time. Real estate people has a lot of ways of finding people that wants to invest in business and business buildings. So I don't, I don't know if it's been advertised through a real estate or if it's trying to be sold individually or what. That's about what I got to say about that.
Yeah, my, my concern is that, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a unique building. It's going to take a unique tenant, a unique person to come in there and buy that building to make something work within the, you know, within the footprint that's there. And, and I don't, I don't know the Lincoln market. I do know the Bellevue market and we do have a lot of vacant commercial properties in Bellevue. So my, my comment or my concern is that I may be more in, you know, accepting of the group home going in there as opposed to a building sitting empty for five to 10 years. You know, um, that, that's kind of my perspective on this.
Well, I think it'd be a pretty good gamble for, for me personally to set empty. Yeah. But I think it'd be sold. I think it's a markable building. It's markable and there's businesses out there that would probably buy it if it was advertised well.
All right.
And the safe, one of the other things is the safety issues. For young people, people, adults that's got the family, they look at that safety deal pretty strongly. Of taking their, uh, children to safe places. And so that's one of the objections I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hankins?
Uh, yes, I have a question for staff if I may. Uh, the report shows a Leopard partnership as the owner and I-three LLC as the applicant. Uh, does the sale of the property as a contingent on the rezoning?
I don't know that, Mr. Hankins. We don't get involved in that portion of it. Um, we take the ownership information from Sarpy County as well as the application that the applicant submits. I would say typically in most real estate transactions, yes, that would be contingent upon city approval. But again, I can't speak to that because we don't get involved in that aspect of it.
Thank you.
A quick question for staff. If we, uh, extend it up to the twenty, the next meeting, do new notices go out to the neighborhood or is because we extended it via this, is it just continued?
No, if it's continued to a specific date, we do not re-advertise and send out notices. Um, it will just appear on the next agenda.
Well, if there's no further discussion or questions, I would move that we continue this matter to the February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Motion by Cutsforth, second by Ackley.
Mr. Casey?
Yeah.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Arnie?
Yeah.
Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ackley?
Yes.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
All voted yes, motion carried.
All right. This item will be carried forward to the February twenty-fifth meeting. Moving on to item three D. Request to approve the twenty-twenty-one comprehensive plan update. Applicant City of Bellevue. Staff? Do you have an update?
All right. Um, yes, so we last updated the comprehensive plan in two thousand eighteen. Uh, we typically do a complete update every three years, so we are due again this year in two thousand twenty-one. What I have presented to you represents the updates that, um, I saw necessary. Some updated information in regards to statistics, um, projects that have happened. Most of the update that you will see is in terms of the future land use map and also in regards to the city's short, mid, and long-term goals. Um, that's typically where we have the most conversation and the most updates in the document. I have talked into a couple of different commissioners. Uh, we'll have some good discussion tonight about what updates you folks would like to see prior to it moving forward to City Council. Other than that, I guess we can go ahead and dive in and get started. We can do this however you guys would like to. I don't know if we want to take it section by section or if those commissioners that have questions just want to go ahead and, and make their questions and comments. And of course, it's a public hearing, so anybody who wants to speak publicly will have the opportunity to do so as well.
All right. So first the public hearing. Not seeing anybody else on the meeting to speak on this item. So I will close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners. Commissioners, thoughts?
Chair, if I, uh, may suggest, is it easier to just start the front of it and go through it until we comment to comment as they come up? Or would you like to just have each commissioner add comments, go through it?
It's three hundred pages, so I'm going to say let's do, uh, commissioner by commissioner on items and, uh, go from there.
Well, hearing nobody else, uh, wishing to go first, I'll go first. I'll warm it up if, uh, that's okay with, um, your, this chair. Uh, first comment I've had is on page of three. This is the City of Bellevue recommendations short term. Uh, I have two comments for consideration is that I noticed that the short term section is silent in reference to, uh, any, uh, development of, uh, galvan rope from Harland admission at all. And, uh, my suggestion would be for consideration is that we have some sort of line item in one to four years that says establish some sort of public-private partnership to implement the to implement the redevelopment plan of Galvin Road from, uh, Harland to, uh, to Mission. Uh, the consideration I've got is that the, um, city may very well face and we need to plan for, for, you know, comprehensive plan to somehow avoid redeveloping Mission, Galvin Road, and Port Crook all at the same time. And so the suggestion I have on this particular item is to throw that into the short term as to establish at least a plan to, uh, look forward. So that would be part of a, uh, motion to approve would be that comment. And then the second one I have in this area is to, we make mention of the capital improvement plan and incorporating maintenance and facilities into the capital improvement plan. If the commissioners recall, we approved a small $9 million addition to redevelop the library. And in the one to five year as a comprehensive plan that, uh, the citizens look at as well as other groups, I think the library plan should be included in here. It's just one line to plan for the, uh, library redevelopment and execution of that $9 million expenditure. Thoughts or comments are welcome.
Mr. Jacobson?
Ms. Kane, go.
Yeah, Mr. Jacobson, uh, the improvement along Lincoln Road, Harland Drive, or, uh, Lincoln Road to Mission is in a later part of the plan, but you want it also mentioned in the short-term objectives?
I think so, and, and really when, when I mentioned it, Ms. Kane, it's very, I'm glad you mentioned that point is I think in the one to five year, we need to have a plan to move into the long-term to execute. So what I'm trying to establish is we get the plan going in years one through five and actually do some sort of execution in, in later years.
Well, along with that, when the city was bidding for the Space Command or whatever that's called now, they had, were going to donate X number of dollars to improve the Bellevue Gate. Should we mention something about, I, I mean, I know that's also in the later portion of the plan, but would that be a place to also mention it? The short-term objectives, improving the entrance, the south entrance there to Offutt Air Force Base?
Uh, for myself and, and, and my proposal for this section, I, I'm agreeable to that. Uh, perhaps maybe the wording should be something along the lines of plan for that improvement in the later years and, and make sure it's integrated, but, uh, yes, I agree with you.
So we have something.
What we could do is I could kind of combine both of those items, you know, have a statement in regards to a plan for the redevelopment along the Galvin Corridor, um, leading to the Offutt Gate, um, in that area. So we could, I could combine those and kind of put those into one similar goal.
Yeah.
I'm agreeable.
And I, uh, taking it from someone who drives that intersection every single morning, uh, the Offutt Gate, yes, that, that's a important thing. I can see a line of cars, usually about 20 cars long waiting there, but, um, much higher priority is just getting that intersection itself repaired because you've got that big street down from the school, you've got a lot of traffic, um, it's a very confusing intersection. And so, uh, my own comment would be, I kind of want to split those out because redeveloping the back gate for Offutt would be a low priority. Um, just kind of like work with Offutt for planning for them to update their gate. We can just reconfigure the roads there maybe. And then the short term is to reconfigure that intersection because, uh, I, I see quite a number of, uh, almost accidents every morning. People going on Mission that want to go straight or don't know they have to be in the left lane to do that, right lane to turn only lane. Um, so I agree with Mr. Jacobson and Ms. Kane that both items need to be addressed, but I would like to really highlight that one, intersection is much higher priority for me personally just because I, I see that every day.
And we do mention, again, later in the plan, um, reconfiguring that entrance and that intersection. So what I could do is, is combine, um, the Galvin Road redevelopment to include that entrance to the base gate and then we could break out the, have a second short-term goal be the improvement or the realignment of the intersection leading into Old Town.
Thank you.
I'm agreeable.
And then, Mr. Jacobson, on page one or 218, it talks about, uh, the library in that addition. Did you want to add more than that or what specific did you want to do?
I think to emphasize that we need to actually execute what we put into the capital, uh, improvement budget, which is that library budget's been out there for two years and it's slid year to year, uh, that it is in our comprehensive plan to move that forward in the, in the one to five year. And, and I don't know if I'm necessarily saying actually construction or reconstruction of the library, but we need a plan in place of actual timing and milestones. And that's what I'd like to see established in the short-term plan is, uh, plan of some milestones on how we're gonna execute that expenditure of $9 million. And, and the library is the key, even if it's made, mentioned in later sections. I think that's a huge, uh, significant bullet point for the community development, no matter what part of Bellevue you are, and should, I feel should be upfront and highlighted as a short-term goal. Any thoughts or comments?
I agree with you that maybe it should be referenced in the one to five year goals to, uh, finalize the plan and, you know, start the construction project process of phase one in that timeframe, since it's already been known, it's already been budgeted. It's kind of like, let's get it designed if it's not been designed and get it going.
My thinking exactly. Uh, another small comment I had, moving on if everybody's agreeable with those, is on page five, it's City of Bellevue District Recommendations. And there's a small bullet there that says establish a historic walking tour of Old Town. And, and this is a small point, but you'll hear me make this throughout a couple more points and, and I don't have hundreds of points here, so bear with me. But this point is establish a historic walking tour and/or biking tour of Old Town. Uh, what we've seen with COVID-19 is a huge research and interest in biking and bicycling for, uh, recreation and exercise. And I, I really think this is a good opportunity to acknowledge this in several parts of our comprehensive plan that, that we understand that that change is happening. So my suggestion would just be a small modification here. If that historic walking tour be walking slash and/or biking tour.
I'm in support of that. Um, I made note of that. I don't know if there's any other discussion or comment to that point.
Okay. Uh, page seven, uh, much the same thing in the southwest area. It says make the southwest district more pedestrian-friendly and, and my suggestion might be to and/or bike-friendly and bike connector trail accommodating. Uh, that would mirror the northwest section as establish a sidewalk in that area of high pedestrian and, and trail connector points is just throwing, uh, biking to make the, that district more pedestrian, bike-friendly. And I think enough said on that. Um. Bear with me. Uh, page 14, and this is under, uh, Community Goals Section 2.2 under Housing. Uh, again, a small point, we have a goal to make community, uh, create more choices for all housing, single-family, mixed housing, uh, new construction. Uh, I feel that we probably also need to add in missing middle housing and, uh, lower income housing as well, mixed use, just those words into that area to show the present housing that's, uh, available in the, uh, Bellevue area.
I would agree with that. We also have, uh, legislation that was passed last year that will, um, have us address that as well, so it makes sense to add that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, page 15, under Public Facilities, identify and preserve sites for new schools and encourage the donation of land for new school development. Again, I think that section's a, uh, area where library might fit in as well. Um, maybe under, uh, Community Character, uh, Areas of Civic in, in Importance as well. And, and staff, I'd leave it to you if there's a value of throwing it into that section or not?
I agree. Um, it would, in my mind, it would work well in the Public Facility section.
Uh, speaking on this, the schools, I thought that during the bond issue for the schools that they identified the locations for those new schools that they were aiming for. I may be wrong with that, um, but I do know that they were planning for a couple additional buildings with that. I don't know if we want to look at that maybe for the next update. It may be too late to add it into this one, but just touching with Bellevue Public Schools that that spots are already decided.
Okay, and I think that that too, that statement kind of just solidifies, um, whatever plan that they would have that we would support, you know, those sites that they have identified and, you know, we would support the preservation of those.
Okay, thanks. Uh, the next item, quite a ways into the article, so bear with me as I, uh, scroll. That's not necessarily a bad sign, at least for my comments. Um. I'm already up to, uh, page 37 or so. Uh, I'm, uh, jumping back to, uh, page 20, just, uh, just FYI, I asked this question offline during our annexations and, uh, page 20 has the existing land use map. It's, uh, kind of a tough, uh, map to understand, but FYI for the commissioners, the actual geographical center of Bellevue has shifted to about 25th and Railroad Crossing as you go north right by the Monia Plant. And that's the geographical center. So my suggestion, and as, as soon as staff is, uh, able to get into the document and have the detail to modify this map, that we put it in one of the center of Bellevue. I think it would be a surprise to people reading the comprehensive plan that the center of Bellevue has actually shifted that far out with the annexations. And that, that's probably a future, future activity.
Mr. Jacobson, and I did talk about that. Um, I can definitely add that geographic center to our new future land use map that's coming out. I think that's a good point. Most people will probably be surprised to see where the center of Bellevue actually is at.
Um, another comment on page 57, that's a chart, uh, as, as well. I was surprised in looking at the chart, that's Bellevue Population projections, is that, uh, actually we're, Bellevue's growing faster than anticipated in those curves. And so that's a plus for what everybody does in Bellevue. Uh, I had one comment on, uh, energy infrastructure and, uh, I've made staff aware of this. That's on page 91, this is my last comment, is that we talked about Bellevue's electrical structure, uh, electrical infrastructure and electric power. And I made note that Port Calhoun has actually been closed and is offline. So it's a small wording change, uh, no big deal there. And, uh, that's the end of my comments. Uh, I'm hoping other commissioners have comments as well. The comprehensive plan is one of the biggest things that I think we do as commissioners to telegraph, if you will, not only to commercial property owners, but to the, the citizens and other people that provide input on this as to where Bellevue is going. And so I'm, uh, hopeful that as I end up my little portion of com, comments here that, uh, we'll hear other ones as well. And, Mr. Chair, thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you for the comments. Mr. Hankins, did you have some?
Um, yes, um, page six, there was a mention about a casual pool and downing pool. Uh, it said convert either a casual pool or downing pool to a water park. Uh, does the wordage need to be updated? Casual pool was recently renovated, I believe, two years ago. So I don't think that'll be, uh, a candidate for a, a water park.
Nope, and you're correct, Mr. Hankins. I updated it in other places in the report. I just missed that one, so I'll make note of that and I will update that language.
And, uh, yeah, I, I agree, downing pool definitely needs an update because I lived right in there for three summers back in high school. It's kind of, kind of, kind of dumpy, unfortunately. So that'd be a, that'd be a nice, nice, uh, update for the neighborhood. Uh, one question I had, uh, page five, uh, increase housing style diversity in Old Town. Uh, what's the reasoning of, uh, increasing the housing style? Do you want different types of style, like container homes, more modern houses? What's, what are we going for there?
I think as we look at the Old Town redevelopment that is hopefully looming in the near future, just perhaps to, um, afford people more alternatives to the, the standard, um, you know, 1940s, 1950 era housing that is there currently. Um, hopefully the idea would be to usher in some vitality, some more development, bring in some different people, um, be attractive to a various, um, population and be able to kind of offer more to the area.
Okay, and, uh, I do a lot of work in Austin, Texas, and obviously there's different housing styles down there. Are there any requirements for, uh, shipping container homes in Bellevue? Is, are those allowable?
Not currently. Um, under our current regulations, shipping containers would only be allowed in certain zoning districts, which doesn't include residential. But I do realize that in this day and age, there's a number of different creative, um, housing opportunities that are out there, so I haven't really been asked about those. Um, that's not to say they won't come up, so, you know, we may see amendments to the zoning ordinance as a result.
Thank you.
As I say, the, uh, personal experience again in Old Town is, uh, I've got four kids and when we wanted to stay in Old Town, trying to find a five-bedroom house is impossible. And, uh, you end up having to buy a smaller house and just get smaller rooms sectioned off for them. So I think part of that later on, they talk about getting larger houses, kind of more interspersed into Old Town to allow for larger families as such, so.
Any, uh, any updates on the old, uh, city hall? Anything going on there?
Nothing that I can share publicly at this point, but hopefully, hopefully we will be able to do so soon.
Thank you.
Um, a quick comment that I didn't think about till, uh, Mr. Hankins mentioned the pools was, I didn't see any, uh, language in there about splash pads. I know that the city's been kind of aiming more for more splash pads versus pools and water parks. I didn't know if you could maybe insert that a few spots?
Sure, um, I can add that. And maybe, you know, we have had a couple of splash pads go in the last couple of years. We have one going into Lee Wood Oaks neighborhood currently. Maybe, um, maybe that could be more of a midterm goal, like a six to 10-year goal where we look at other locations and increase that.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Arnie?
Yeah, this, uh, TV, one thing I really wanted to look at or understand is I'm looking at the map. Uh, we recently had an application that came in in the 60th and 370, uh, just south of there, more like 60th and Schram. Um, I kind of looked at the existing and tried to compare it to the new. Did we make, I know we had a lot of discussion that night about, um, the previous comprehensive plan didn't allow certain uses there and we thought we maybe need to make some updates to that particular area. to that particular area. Obviously, that's the entry point into our community from civilians. Did we make any changes in that area, say from Sixtieth down to Forty-Second Street, Forty-Eighth Street along Three Seventy or in that area?
Yes, we did make a few changes. So that particular property that you are talking about, I believe we changed from, well, that may have stayed to medium density residential. It was residential, I think it was low and medium density residential. Changed it all to medium density residential. Along the Highway Three Seventy corridor, we made some suggestions as far as from that Forty-Second Street down to Sixtieth Street. Forty-Second Street in that area was still showing like residential estates based on underlying zoning. It was also showing some residential. We changed that to mixed use, just to kind of open it up so that you could have a mix of some retail, residential, have a few different things there. Also extended the commercial corridor all the way down to Sixtieth Street. Previously, we had some multifamily residential and mixed in with the commercial. So some of those areas, we made mixed use, but we continued that commercial down that corridor and a little bit farther to the south. It really has, there's been a large focus in recent years to kind of protect those commercial corridors and opportunities that we have left. We have a lot of redevelopment opportunities, obviously with Fort Creek Road and Old Town, but we don't have a lot of areas that we will have for new commercial opportunities. Some of that Three Seventy corridor is probably our last opportunity for a really good commercial corridor. Along Cornhusker, you've got some limitations with floodplain, floodway. You have AQs that extends up in that area, so it's going to be a little bit more difficult. We also have that along Three Seventy farther east as well, where we're limited with floodplain, floodway, and also AQs. People always wonder why we don't have commercial development at Twenty-Fifth and Three Seventy on that northeast side. That's why. So we did make some changes over in that area in the map. Jumping to the map, I can highlight some of the other changes we made. We extended the activity center area along the Highway Thirty-four, Platteville Road interchange. Extended that farther over to South Twenty-seventh Street, just to kind of open that up and give some flexibility so that, you know, we'd have the opportunity for a commercial, multifamily residential, single-family residential, kind of have that live-work-play concept. Also made some changes over in the area of Fort Creek Road and Fairview Road, just tweaked a little bit. Based on what we have going there now, we have the application on the south side of Fairview Road for ML that was previously approved, just the plat was never filed. We extended some of that ML and flex on the north side as well. Felt that it makes sense over in that location that we might have more, you know, larger open areas that would be conducive to that flex or that light industrial zoning. Otherwise, I don't know that we made any major changes to that future land use map. I think those were probably some of the more significant ones that we did.
Yeah, and just so the commissioners are aware, so the reason why I ask, Sixtieth Street is on my radar is the county has that in their road plan. They actually have signed the contract for the design services to pave Sixtieth Street from Cape Hart to Three Seventy. So the county's moving forward with that project. They'll have surveyors and designers out working on that, and then, you know, obviously the county will go forward from there. But it's just, it's going to be, I think, another north-south connector for Bellevue that we have, because from Sixtieth, the way, you know, the way it's designed works out, we really, we really jump from Sixtieth all the way almost Thirty-Sixth Street. There's, there's a big, Forty-Eighth Street doesn't go through or anything like that. So I think it'll be another kind of corridor coming in there. So it's important we got that. So thank you.
Tammy, just one question for me on page one fifteen in the short-term goals.
I have a couple of comments, but. On page sixty-nine, it talks about the increase in.
Are you there, Ms. Kane? Ms. Kane, can you hear us? Mr. Ackley, do you want to touch on your items? Maybe you've heard a chance to buffer the internet?
Sure, just one question on page one fifteen, part of the short-term goals. Tammy, I think.
Okay, Mr. Ackley, are you going or am I?
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
Mr. Ackley, yep.
On the middle there on the housing rehabilitation. Is that something, we've kind of got a formal plan going?
I'm going to go with page sixty-nine. They talked about the increase in traffic. Is there anything? Yes. I can't hear you.
Can you hear me, Ms. Kane?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, page sixty-nine.
Mrs. Kane, we keep losing you.
Ms. Kane, I would suggest maybe log out of the meeting and try to log back in and see if that would help the signal.
All right, Mr. Ackley, do you want to go ahead while we wait with, for Mrs. Kane?
Sure, I think it was page one fifteen on the housing rehabilitation. Is that something we're pretty close to formalizing using ZCBG money for some of the Old Town housing in particular?
Yes. Yes, that is something that we have been working on, and it's, it's an, it's an ongoing goal.
That's all I got.
Okay. It looks like we temporarily lost Mrs. Kane, so I don't know if there's anybody else that had questions while we wait for her to try to get back on.
This is Mr. Jacobson. I have one more comment on the future land use map. And that is consideration of placement of an activity center somewhere right along the very edge of our zoning boundary. Is that something that is appropriate to do now or the next provision a couple of years out?
What, what edge of the zoning boundary, Mr. Jacobson?
You know, the west edge, either Cape Hart or Fairview, the very west edge, maybe perhaps even the southwest corner of the Sixtieth Street. And I would say just north of the corner where our Sixtieth Street intersection is there, that scale gets a little confusing. I'm guessing that's two or three miles south of Three Seventy.
Our ETJ does not extend all the way to Sixtieth Street as you go farther south. We, at Cape Hart, we only go to about Fifty-Fourth and Cape Hart. It's not a straight line. So Three Seventy and immediately south, we go to Sixtieth, but then it jogs back over to the east. So the Sixtieth and Cape Hart area is not presently in our jurisdiction.
So perhaps Fifty-Fourth and Cape Hart, and I'm not throwing this out for consideration until Ms. Kane comes back on, on her point. Is that something where there should be some additional activity center type of development on the western edge to demarket? Or do we think we've got that covered between what's on Three Seventy and down towards Fairview's activity center?
What we could look at is, we did put some commercial along the north side of Forty-Eighth and Cape Hart. We could look at doing more of an activity center concept in that location near Forty-Eighth and Cape Hart. That might make sense.
I don't know how the other, other commissioners feel, but you know, this map kind of telegraphs where we think the development's going to happen. It looks just kind of sparse for commercial development out that way. Any thoughts from other commissioners at all? And I see Ms. Kane is back, so I would yield the floor back.
No, go ahead. Please finish, Mr. Jacobson. Go ahead.
We do hear you just fine, Ms. Kane, though. In that area perhaps, and I think staff, Ms. Pong, that's a perfect idea you've got if the other commissioners are agreeable?
I think so.
Mr. Arnie, I can't hear you.
We can see you talking, but we can't hear you.
Yeah, I currently have the phone muted too, sorry. You know, I live around that neighborhood, and I think Forty-Eighth and Cape Hart makes sense for commercial, but nothing really west of there. It's not really, really set up. The next place you would do commercial would be Sixtieth, which is not in our zoning jurisdiction. So Fifty-Fourth, to me, doesn't make sense. It's all houses in that area now, on both, you know, both the north and south side there.
Good point, I appreciate your input. I can yield back to Ms. Kane, if commissioners have any other questions about that.
It's not like I have anything really important to say, but I have questions. On street improvements, which is page sixty-nine and eighty-four, Chandler Road is not mentioned at all. Is that because we share that with Omaha, or it's not a Bellevue street?
Chandler Road or Harrison?
Chandler Road.
You said it's not mentioned on page sixty-nine or seventy?
Well, I didn't see things about improvement. Did I miss something?
Gotcha. At, at this time, for Chandler Road, there's, there's nothing short-term or in the near future for any kind of widening or major improvement along Chandler. Probably why it's not included as a project. I mean, that's something, as we do the comp plan update, you know, we kind of go year by year, do the major updates every three years. That's definitely something that can still be on our radar.
Okay. And, let's see. I'm, I was glad to see on page eighty-five that they're bypassing the Willow Springs, or trying to figure out a way to bypass traffic through the Willow Springs area. I thought that was good. And I would like to compliment the staff on the presentation of this comp plan. I thought it was very, very well done.
Thank you.
And I missed Mr. Ackley's comments because I was logging back in. But I think we need to get to the public, and I don't think we need it through the comp plan, but I'm going to throw this out. More information on the Old Town redevelopment and the Highway Thirty-four corridor development. I think the public needs to know more about that, as well as, and that's all on page one fifteen, if anyone needs to see it. And then, on page one eleven, it talks about helping to make the AQs area an asset to the community. And I think that's also very important, because I don't think all Bellevue citizens understand the AQs area. So I was glad to see that included.
If I may speak to the Old Town and Highway Thirty-four. Economic development's a funny thing. I would love to be able to share all the interesting little projects and tidbits that come our way. Unfortunately, we can't do that until we have solid projects and we have solid commitments. They may come up for public hearing if a rezoning is necessary or any kind of site plan approval. So through that process, there would be part, public participation. I know the city routinely gets comments through social media, through the mayor's office, different comments, different suggestions. Those are all taken into consideration as well. Like I said, just reiterating, I would love to share all the information we get about potential projects, but unfortunately, we just can't because of the nature of the business.
Understood.
If I might, before we move forward, can we go back to the discussion of Forty-Eighth and Cape Hart? So currently, the south side is already set with the plating and the zoning that's been done. We've got a couple of different housing developments, some townhomes, small commercial property at the corner. That's why the north side is shown as commercial. I know the discussion was to potentially do activity center. One thing I want to point out, activity center does open it up a little bit more, because by definition, that's a live-work-play area, so you could do commercial, you could potentially do residential. You know, that would be more of a mixed-use type development. Does the planning commission want to leave it as proposed where it's strictly commercial? Or would you guys like to see that changed to an activity center and kind of those broader uses?
Probably recommend broader uses.
Okay.
I would agree, I would.
Okay.
I'd agree, I would support that. You already have it going on with that State Farm office there, and I know we just, you know, we needed to replat with those kind of, not really multifamily, but those smaller, I don't even want to call them, row houses.
Yes, yes, yep.
You kind of, you kind of already have some mixed stuff going on there the way it is, so.
Okay. So include that area into a larger activity center is what I'm hearing, correct? Got it.
Yes.
I just have a look in and then a couple of comments, or comments, I guess, for the rest of the plan. On, maybe on page four, midterm, says work with the county to transfer ownership of rundown properties. What, what is that referring to?
You said that was on page four?
Correct.
I think part of that has to do with code enforcement efforts and kind of solidifying some of those rules and regulations and some of those situations where we've run into what I will call situations where it's no man's land, where we have properties that are rundown, not taken care of. Our nuisance codes are in the city code in Bellevue. We have other rules and regulations that are in our zoning ordinance that extend to the ETJ. With Sarpy County, it's a little bit different. They don't obviously have a code that's similar to ours. So we have certain properties where they aren't in city limits, so they're not covered by the rules and regulations in our city code, and yet Sarpy doesn't have a good avenue to help us out. So one of the goals that we would have is to work with the county, potentially either shore up some of those issues, or yes, work on finding a path forward where if somebody isn't taking care of a property, where it can be transferred, you know, to somebody who, who needs it or could use it in a, in a more beneficial way to the community.
Got it, thank you. Page twenty-five, educational, you know, there's a new school, Omaha School going in, Fort Creek and Childs. I know you're not listing every school there, but that's a significantly, kind of a significant difference, it's not a Bellevue school. I don't know if you want to list that there.
Sure, I can add that one in.
And then finally, page two thirty-six. Landmark and activities for this, this sector that's touched upon now Hills Golf Course, and unfortunately, that is no longer there.
So noted, I can update that, too.
And as the others said, it's a great plan. You could spend, spend a lot of hours looking at it and dreaming about what things.
And as the others said, it's a, a great plan. You could spend, spend a lot of hours looking at it and, and dreaming about what things could be, but I think it lays out a very good plan for the future.
Thank you, and I do appreciate, obviously, this isn't a small document. I do appreciate you folks, um, going through it. Some of you that have been on the Planning Commission for years and years have done this multiple times, so, uh, your work does not go unnoticed.
Does anyone else have any more comments?
What we could do in way of a motion, if, um, there's no other comments, we want to move forward, um, what I can do is I can incorporate the suggestions discussed tonight. Um, that could be put in a form of a motion, and I will add those in prior to the plan moving forward to City Council.
Does anybody want to make that said motion? Mr. Jacobson?
I will, uh, make the motion to approve the, uh, twenty-one, Twenty-Twenty-One Comprehensive Plan of eighteen, uh, modifications as discussed by all the planning commissioners this evening, and a job well done by all the commissioners, staff as well.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Jacobson, second by Cutford?
I'll second.
It would be a third, I think.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Ms. Kane? Ms. Kane? Will come back. Mr. Arnie?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you get that?
I did, yes. Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ackley?
Yes.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
Ms. Cutford?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
All voted yes, motion carried.
And I believe that that motion, that this item will go in front of the City Council on March second also. All right? Last, finishing up, do we have any new current business? Staff?
Um, not really. I just want to thank you guys for hanging in there tonight. I think this is probably one of the longer virtual meetings that we've had. Um, while we're getting the hang of it, it's still not the same as being in person, um, especially with the comp plan update. I appreciate all the legwork you guys have done and making this go smoothly. Also, I did forward an email to you folks, I believe it was last week. Typically, we have the annual MPZA conference in March. They have decided to postpone until September in the hopes that we can do that in person. Uh, so keep that on your radar. They also mentioned they're looking at doing a virtual training or conference still this spring, so I think some of you guys are probably on those emails. If not, I'll continue to pass those emails along, so you have that information. Other than that, that's it.
All right, uh, motion for adjournment?
I would make a motion for adjournment.
Second by Hankins? Second by Cutford?
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Ms. Kane? Ms. Kane?
Give us a thumbs up.
Mr. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ackley?
Yes.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
Ms. Cutford?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
All voted yes, motion carried.